Do we have to change from the formality? Or are you going to say something?
If you just ask me, I'll tell you what it is and you can adopt it with that change. It doesn't have to be a separate motion. Okay, at six o'clock, do we call this meeting to order? Are we all brought to the floor? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now is the time for public comment by anybody who wants to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda. If you want to speak to someone on the agenda, I will give you time to do that when we get to it. Seeing no one, we'll move along to the report of the mayor and the city commissioners, and we'll start down with Commissioner Fawley. Nothing tonight. Commissioner Ziegel?
Just want to thank the Public Works team, kind of playing devil's duty, doing leaf and snow cleanup. So, I appreciate you helping get things cleaned back up during this awkward season. Every year catches us a little off guard, and every year, the team always steps up so well that it's cleaned up quite rapidly. So, please have a thank you.
And some broken water lines.
Yeah.
I saw it. Yes. Commissioner Duncan. Commissioner Hammeret?
Just want to say, um, thank you for having the election go so smoothly. Thank you to Karen and all the staff and the volunteers who made that day happen so smoothly. And such a great turnout at the community was very high. What was the percentage? Just over forty-eight, which is really good, right, for an off-year election? So, thank you for that.
Karen predicted fifty, so you are magic.
Better than the weatherman. Sure.
Mr. Miller?
Uh, just really quick, wanted to remind folks that the Friday after Thanksgiving, we have the holiday tree lighting, and I don't think we have another meeting before then. So, now is the time to call it out and say, uh, hope to see everyone there. And I'm going to actually be in town this year for that, which is fucking exciting, too. I can't wait. So, hope to see you there.
Mr. Walters?
Uh, thank you. I echo the comments of Commissioner Ziegel with regards to Public Works and Commissioner Hammeret with regards to election. I'd also would specifically like to compliment our city clerk Karen Brower on how well she handled a odd situation with the county not being able to report results. And I thought you did a good job of communicating about that through the Facebook page. Well, yeah, just so thank you.
Done. Nothing tonight. Okay. Um, well, I want to congratulate all of the newly elected and re-elected members of the city commissioner, city commission, Karen Hammeret, congratulations on your reelection. John Aaron Schorst, I think you're somewhere. Chris Pakla, I guess he's not here. And Katie Fawley, congratulations to all of you. Well done. And yes, thank you for a well-run election. Crazy busy, so even considering that we had so many BAPCP ballots, still many people who voted. Well done. Um, I also, um, I've heard from several residents since the, um, well, during the election and since the election, asking about the fact that now we're going to have two Barnum attorneys on our commission. And I've spoken with John Huff about it. When they get seated next week, or two weeks from now, we'll have two Barnum attorneys representing the third ward and, um, of course, our attorney of record, John Huff, is a Barnum attorney. So, we want to make sure that we think about, um, any sort of conflicts, issues that might arise ahead of time and, uh, make sure that we, um, in the best, uh, looking out for our citizens, making sure that we're thinking about those things ahead of time. And I know that Barnum has had these discussions. So, I guess, John, if, um, it would be possible to maybe have an educational session at the next meeting to have something on there where you could discuss the things that you've been talking about at Barnum and make sure that it's clear to everybody, most importantly, clear to the citizens. So, it would be my recommendation to, um, add an, uh, an educational session at the next meeting. Are there any objections to that at all? So, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, uh, yeah, I guess I don't know what an educational session is. But certainly, if you want to have an agenda item where, um, either Mr. Huff or myself or Mr. Aaron Schorst, if he's, if we do it after he spends the morning, can you speak to that? I mean, I think that that would be...
Oh, no, I, I was, I was thinking having people from Barnum come and speak to that, um, that the ones that specifically refer to that. I'm having them say, what is, what's the appropriate way to approach and whatever else? Just, just to be, you know, before it becomes an issue, just to have that discussion ahead of time, just so that we, before something's pending before us, to make sure that we all understand what the appropriate approach is.
I, I guess I maybe Mr. Huff has spoken with somebody. I haven't. This is the first I've kind of heard of this, and so I don't know whether or not our general counsel or somebody else would be available at the next meeting. But I think that something can certainly be discussed. I know I've personally spoken to this issue before at multiple commission meetings when issues have come up. Um, I don't know, Mr. Huff, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, Terry and I have had some talk about this, and she, uh, she said she would make herself available for that kind of a presentation.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I really, I think it should come from somebody besides the commissioners. I think that, you know, so having it come from somebody, uh, within the firm, if not without, outside of the firm, either way, just so that, we just want to make sure that we've thought about it ahead of time and that it, you know, that we're not like suddenly saying, oh, I think this is how it's supposed to go, that we agree ahead of time. So, it could be good education for the commissioners that will be sitting here as well, which will be me. Okay? No objections, we'll go over that. Thank you. All right, uh, now on to the regular agenda items. And the first item on the agenda is an introduction of an ordinance to amend section 1.4, chapter 1 of title 1 of the city code pertaining to contents of the code book. Um, there's no hearing required, but approval is requested, and Attorney Huff will be presenting.
Yes, and this is actually an introduction tonight, uh, like any other ordinance, does require two readings. Um, and so we'll be back in a second for adoption. This is kind of a general catch-all provision that is currently in the code. Uh, when we were going through the code, uh, with the codifier, it was their suggestion that we go ahead and adopt this section early so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, so it's in place when the code comes out. It really is just a, uh, a section that deals with leaving no gaps between when ordinances that we've repealed go out and ordinances come in. It basically says this is, they're happening simultaneously, so when that code is finally adopted, which we now think is going to be somewhere in the next couple of months, uh, that we'll be positioned to have this, this in there as part of the code. So, that's the whole purpose of this, as I said, we did this last time around, many moons ago when we had the code adopted, and we've updated, uh, some of the language in this one because there are ordinances that are not included in the publications, such as PUD ordinance and so forth. They'll still be available, they'll be online, but they won't be codified. And we also did that, for instance, with the Mishcon franchise, which is the most boring thing you could possibly ever want to read. But it'll be available, it just won't be codified. So, that's the purpose of this section. You just need to introduce it tonight, and as I say, we can, uh, adopt it at the following meeting.
Any questions?
I was just hoping that we either, you, Mr. Huff, or perhaps Mr. With favor, Ms. Brower, could speaks a little bit to the, the process that we've gone through in terms of going through and updating the ordinances. I mean, it's been a very extensive process. I just, I, I think it's important to kind of recognize the work that's gone into that and perhaps, um, help explain a little bit to, I know I've gotten a couple of questions about, you know, why is this taking so long? You know, we, we asked, uh, I think we voted maybe a year ago or something closer than, uh, putting, updating the ordinances online and going with the codifier. So, whoever would be best to speak on it?
I think, it doesn't matter, I'd go if Karen wants to.
I think Karen is one who'd really carry the laboring order on this.
I was going to do it during the goals update, but I can do it now if you'd like.
Either way, we can, we can do it later then if that's part of your...
Okay. I have the new book, and I have some things I was going to say during our goals update.
I, I, I really just wanted to note that I'm very appreciative of the effort, and I know that a lot more goes into it than some people might realize, so thank you for that.
So, I'm looking for a motion to introduce this?
Motion to introduce ordinance amendment, section 1.4.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Will say no. That has been introduced. All right, now, uh, number five, introduction of an ordinance to repeal article 1 of chapter 31 of title 3 of the city code, removing park rules from the ordinances. And Attorney Huff?
Right, and I want to emphasize on this one in particular, this is, um, purely a formatting issue that was suggested by the codifier, which Karen and I agreed with. Chapter 31 contains all of the park rules. And, uh, park rules change with some regularity. Uh, there are ones that are deleted, new ones that are added, existing ones that are modified. And, uh, if you read the language closely, it always anticipated that these were going to be maintained, not as code sections per se, but as a rules booklet, and that, uh, they were proved that, uh, you know, violations, these would still be enforced like an ordinance violation. So, kind of had to bet both worlds. So, they suggested when they were publishing it, said, we really should take these back out. These should be in a separate area, they shouldn't be assigned a section number under the code, um, and, but that's the only change. So, we're, we're basically taking all those, we took a whole article, article 1, which contained nothing with park rules, pulled it out and put it in a separate document. Fred can speak to this as well. The recommission took a look at it and took this opportunity to make a couple of fine-tuning kind of things, but nothing major. Uh, and, uh, we think this will help us going forward because it will allow us to react to things that come up more quickly than if we have to go through two readings of an ordinance. But it would still, I want to assure you this, would still get public input, it would still have to go through the recommissions, still have to come to this body. Uh, the city manager would theoretically authorize the rules or promulgate the rules, and then this body still has to confirm that before they're become enforceable. So, that's a long way of saying, I'd like you to motion to reduce, uh, this change to chapter 31.
Okay. Um, any questions?
Just, just to make sure that I understand, we don't lose any enforceability. We don't lose any, like, we don't lose any control. All we're doing is allowing ourselves to change them without it being an ordinance amendment that takes multiple meetings.
Right, I mean, literally, if you looked at the existing language in the existing code book, you would think, well, that's really how this was supposed to be done anyway, because it talked about we're adopting rules pursuant to specific section of the code. That's still what we're doing. And then it also spells out that those rules are enforceable as ordinances.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? May I please have a motion? Motion to introduce an ordinance to repeal article 1 of chapter 31 of title 3 of the city code. Support. Any questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Will say no. It is introduced. And before we go to the consent agenda, Karen, may I please ask you to discuss the change that you've made in the minutes from what was given to us with our packets?
Yes. Um, so after the draft minutes were released in the packet, Commissioner Walters called and wanted, um, some slight changes to the language in the third paragraph of, um, number 177, few minutes. Um, basically, we changed the last sentence to reflect that, uh, the permit application was being developed and would hopefully be to the commission or the planning commission, whichever body or infrastructure that it would be up for review by the end of the year. So, basically, I just added a timeframe in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for making that change. I appreciate it.
So, that is what we will be voting on, is that change, since we've not introduced anything yet, but that's what we will have in the minutes. Okay. So, um, is there anything else on the consent agenda, or anyone wants to bring up before we make a motion? May I please have a motion for about the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Support. We have motion support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
Will say no. And next, we are going to have our quarterly goals and objectives update, and, uh, can you probably play this one?
Sure, so we'll, we'll start, I don't believe, I'll be the one actually starting, but basically, we're going over our quarterly goals updates. So, each department, um, will, will go through two, three, or four of the goals that we had, uh, this current fiscal year, and update, city commission as a public. So, we'll start with finance department. Karen Bushon?
I know it looks like more areas, but it's basically three areas. I'm going to go over, I'm going to go over like our human resource goals, our IT goals and our accounting goals. Um, and these are the ones that we have completed or will have completed by the end of the year, since it's getting very close to the end of the year. Um, and human resources, um, Rachel's been like working really hard to get the Neoka HR management system up and running. This will help when employees apply for jobs and go through that system. Will also help capturing the data when, um, people are hired, such as their I-9 forums and all, all the required information. So, um, beginning on January 1st, 2020, it will be fully implemented. It's there now, but we're going to, we're making a hard data for when we're going to cut that over. Um, the benefit study, um, and the new administrator and open enrollment, all of that has been taking place, as you guys are aware. Um, we've done all that. We had open enrollment, um, last week, and it went really well. Um, went a good transition with the employees, lots of good questions, but we were able to address all those. Um, we're still working on getting some of the contracts reviewed and all of that. But right now, um, that is all set to go by January 1st of 2020. Uh, moving on to IT, I have the copier printer bid up there. Our current bid is up August 1st of 2020. Um, we're hoping this week or next to get that on the market. We do have a lot of people calling us all the time, oh, because they know our contracts are. So, we have a number of contractors looking for that work, so we should have a pretty good success rate on that bid. Um, our goal is to get it to the commission by January or February, so the way the transition could take place by April 1st. So, we'll be watching for that. Um, and then, um, there's a bunch of network improvements, um, and that, I would say, is about ninety, ninety percent complete right now. So, we're moving along, making all those improvements that we outlined in the, um, capital improvement program last year, so those are almost all set. Um, moving on to accounting, I know I've talked about this one before, but again, these are ones we've completed. Um, we are, um, we've advertised and we've got a lot of, um, paying a lot of vendors through ACH, which saves a lot of money, because it probably cost us between a dollar and a dollar fifty to print the check, mail the check, do all that. Now, we're automatically paying the vendors, it's saving a lot of time. Um, if you remember, we had to change our accounts payable process. Um, we updated all that with the commission, and we're sending the payments, and then the finance committee still receives all the invoices, and they approve those. It's a little more clunky, because I know when they want to pull an invoice, we don't always have them with us, because we're paperless and we don't keep them all, but it's been working.
It works well.
Working well. But again, we don't even keep the paper, it's electronic. We only keep the paper if it was submitted that way. And then the bank transition, that just got completed this week. We just closed the Huntington account finally this week, so that's all set. Um, so that's fully been transitioned. We just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to get any grants or some other money that was sitting out there. Like, for example, like, when Public Safety has a bulletproof vest, like, they have our account numbers, so we'll drop the money in our account. So, we did not want to close it too early, so we've got, we feel like we've got through everything now, and we closed it up and are ready to go. So, that's what we've been working on this year. Good luck with it, Karen. Thank you.
Even mayor, commissioners? Um, just four goals I want to talk about real quick. The first one's the accreditation project, which you know, we've been doing this one for about two and a half years now. Um, on October 18th, we went through our mock assessment, where we had four members of the accreditation team from the state coming to take a look at our department policies, procedures, and our proofs of compliance, and we did pretty good. So, we're scheduled to have our final assessment on December 16 and 17. Once we complete that, um, we should be accredited. And then at the chief's conference in February, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, we should be able to receive our accreditation at that time. So, it's been a lot of work. We've got about a hundred and fifty procedures, uh, to make sure that we meet compliance with a hundred and four standards, but that way, as I've said before, at least we'll have a good benchmark from somebody else that we're doing things, at least in the law enforcement area. Um, the other programs that I want to talk about were the enhanced school security program. That program, again, is going very well. We implemented that at the beginning of the year. Where each day, each, and officers assigned to each of the schools in the city, including St. Stevens, in the morning, in the afternoon, for about fifteen minutes, the officers have to get out of their cars and get to the administrators, students, um, and the staff of the schools. Again, that's been going very well. Um, I met with Dr. Katula about a week ago and some of her staff, and they're very pleased with that program. Um, it, it's going good, it provides a community engagement piece for the departments, better get to know the schools, the students, but it also provides enhanced security. So, that's been going very well.
How is St. Stevens reacting?
Oh, they look, I went over there, it's, it's fine. You know, they get a chance to meet the officers. The elementary school kids are great. You know, the police officers are rock stars. Get to middle school and high school.
Nobody's a rock star, though.
Yeah, that's right. You know, well. So, and that program's going, going very well. Um, at the beginning of the school year, the city authorized funding for two new crossing yards. One was at the post of Lake Drive in Kennesaw, and the other post was at Lake Drive, Bagley, San La Ray. Um, the new post has been, well, received, and I, I haven't received any complaints from the community, so I know things must be going well. It's been all positive. Um, again, the schools have also indicated that's been going very well. So, um, no negatives to that. The one thing that I was kind of worried about, when you add posts like that, sometimes you can get, um, vehicular traffic that may be impeded, but that hasn't occurred at all. So, it's, it's going very well. And the final thing is the crosswalk education enforcement zone. Crosswalk education enforcement zones, and we were able to implement our first one on Route 6, um, at Lake Drive, um, Bagley, San La Ray, and the route. No stops there, as a matter of fact. Officer Hollis was the one that did that. So, what we plan on doing in the spring is implement that on a much more regular basis, the spring, early summer, and then in the fall, over the summer. So, all those things seem to be going pretty well. If anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Hollis. Thank you.
Down here, I've got a little Public Works and then some of the, I have key city managers' goals. Okay, our first goal, um, which is related to our streets and sidewalk millage, is our update for our performance of the millage. Uh, so this is our graph, I provided this in the handout stall of you. So, we just completed, um, our Paser ratings, which is the asset management rating of the surface condition of our streets citywide, uh, here this fall. And our, uh, current progress, which we had 2019, has us at sixty-four percent of our city streets that are rated a five to 10. So, what that is, is that's a good to fair on the five end to an excellence, um, at 10. So, uh, we're making good progress, and this is through a combination of, uh, complete reconstruct for milling overlays and then surface preservation treatments such as cave seals, micro-surfacing, uh, crack sealing. So, there's a whole tool bag, if you recall, going back to, uh, when we're looking at our plan for the millage and really making sure we're providing the right treatment at the appropriate time so that we can, um, maintain our streets that are in excellent condition while we're also, uh, replacing, uh, surfaces for our road Paser rated streets. And this is just by the numbers next to the graph, because I know some people like the visual and some people like the hard facts. So, uh, for milling overlay, we completed just under two miles of streets, uh, this construction year. And then for cave seals, just under three, and for micro-surfacing, uh, which is reserved mainly for local streets, is about three and a half. So, about total of, uh, eight point three nine two miles, and then the total investment we have into streets, uh, this year is, uh, one point seven, uh, or almost one point eight million dollars.
About forty, forty-five?
Well, we have just over forty-seven miles of streets here in Screen Rapids. So, we, we have, you know, really been out there and, and really working our asset management plan to, again, if it's not even, if it's not reconstructing the street, it's some sort of treatment that we're...
Careful with working your asset management.
Yeah. I thought you were going to...
AMP, I can do that.
Yeah, but this is, this is really cool, because, you know, we were just doing projections, right? I mean, I remember when we put this together and Karen and you, and you worked on, you know, what's this going to look like? And so, we had our projections, and we are ahead of projections. That is good stuff.
It is good. And, and every street is different, and everyone degrades, and they'll do things differently based on what they're, how they're constructed. So, uh, we, we hope we're able to continue that increase and exceed our goal, uh, but, uh, we also, as we, we promised we would do, uh, we go back after each construction season and see what's approved, and then also monitor the condition of the streets, um, that maybe haven't been touched. So, we're looking at that whole picture and benchmarking that each year so we can demonstrate to the community how those dollars are having an impact on our road network.
Yeah. I think this is one of the questions that I know I do, so probably everyone gets asked the most, is what about my street? What about one my street? Well, this is good to know how many streets are being touched each year, but as you said, we have, you have ideas of what streets might be next, but after the winter, it could be different.
Correct.
Once we get bids, you might have thought that, uh, the amount of money we had was going to go, uh, half a mile farther, but it didn't, and so we got to take this street out. So, we hate to commit to any street. People here saying, is mine going to be done next year?
Right.
Probably we have an idea of what might be done, but we're not going to commit because we don't know how far the dollars are going to go.
Right, and we'll, we will be putting out, um, our next year's spring projects. We will be putting those out on the table for bid, um, here in, probably in January, and, uh, so we have an early, uh, street bid leg, so we can sort of stay ahead of the, the glut of work in the West Michigan area. So, as you noted, we have, you know, sense of what, what those streets are based off of the bidding environment, but we certainly don't want to make a full commitment to, without seeing what that bid environment is. So, we try to be as conservative as we can be with our estimates, and we hope to, uh, generally add some work, um, each year. So, that's, that's going to be coming very shortly. Um, our team is working very hard right now to get the bid packages ready to go.
And if you look at this, the blue is what we had projected would have, and if we had no millage, if nothing was being prepared, a, and more than what we get from the state, we don't get much from the state. So, it looks like we have about four times as many roads in, in, uh, good shape than would have done if we weren't doing this. I mean, a quick look at this graph. So, that, that's, I just want to call it out, because it's such good news. I was so happy to see this graph. Thanks.
Uh, next slide, I'll get into some of our utility system assets here. We'll touch on the water sewer system and, uh, primarily because those are, those are the drivers behind our, our utility fund. Um, so, we, we went through, if you recall, uh, we spent, uh, several years going through and, and really looking at all of these assets, um, when they were put in the ground and doing con- condition assessments on each one of them. So, on the water side, the asset management, uh, scale that we use is per AWWA, so that's the American Water Works Association. And there's a one to five scale that also correlates to, you'll see, um, coming up here in a second, uh, for the sanitary sewer side for those assessments. So, on the water side, we're looking at the age of the assets, we're looking at what material that asset is, then we look at, we look at our maintenance on it, for frequency of breaks or those types of things. And then we, and then we assign, um, that, the, the asset rating is assigned there. Um, we've talked about this for probably the last five years, but we have a lot of work to do up here, but we have been doing a lot of work in the last twenty years or so, um, as well, when we're looking at what we've been making those investments, basically in our infrastructure, 2.0 in this community. Um, so this, this, uh, year, we just wrapped up our, wrapping up our water main projects, rehabilitation projects here this fall. We do have some service line related work that we're doing with those, but the actual project of the mains are completed. Um, we were able to rehabilitate approximately one mile of, of pipe. And what that means in terms of what is our progress, what's our benchmarking, um, you see how much that total investment is at nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars. On the water side, um, we've been able to move the needle one point eight percent from that five category, which is that sixty point two percent red, and move it directly over to that darker blue, which is at twenty-two point eight percent to be the highest rating. So, that gives you a sense of where those capital dollars are going and then what that progress is. So, similarly, on the sanitary sewer side, so when we did this assessment, it's a little bit easier to do this assessment, because you can actually get inside the pipes. bit easier to do this assessment because you can actually get inside the pipes. So as you recall, several years ago, we received a grant from DQ, which is now Eagle, and we televised all forty-two miles of pipe here in East Screen Rapids to assign. And we had coders as part of that grant that actually watched all that footage, and then they, they provide an assessment rate based off of the PACP NAS scale standards. So types of things we're looking for are offset joints, they're looking for cracking, they're looking for evidence of infiltration and inflow. There's a whole list of things we're looking at, and basically they're been able to stratify those into the five different one through five scale categories. So that's presented there in that pipe chart. The, the cost for rehabilitating sanitary sewer pipe is a lot less than what it is on the water side. But, you know, people think in terms of pipe, and one thing is not like the other at all. So on the sanitary sewer side, we were able to, with investment of about a hundred thousand dollars, move the needle from those assets from a five rating to a one, about one point six percent of our system. So again, we're moving, we're making the same, similar progress to what we've done on the water side of things, but you can just see what the, the costs are from, from one type of utility asset to, to another. These are all of our, these two items here that we're talking about are horizontal assets. So we're strictly talking pipe here. We also make asset, or we also make investments in our capital improvements plan into vertical assets. So we're talking about lift stations, we're talking about pumps, valves, and those types of things too. But just for a big picture, so you guys can see what our progress is and benchmarking that for those investments, I wanted to give you those, these, this visual here tonight.
Are the sanitary sewer pipes, are they all pretty much the same material versus?
We have a lot of, most of the, most of the system in East Screen Rapids is, is that eighty, sixty to eighty years old age, and a lot of it's vitrified clay tile pipe. So it's very susceptible. Most of our homeowners, they haven't already replaced their lateral. I've replaced mine as well. The material's the same. So that's where you, that's where you run into issues, where you've kind of have a good maintenance program. As we noted, the back of our water sewer bills to make sure that people are keeping, keeping up on the condition of their, their own lateral and also maintenance, to make sure that you, you do have root intrusion at joints or cracks, that you're maintaining that so that you don't have backups. So we've done that same thing and monitor our system and have our maintenance program for the exact same reasons that a homeowner would.
So can you go back a slide really quick to the, the more difficult one? So am I correct in assuming, like the auditor last meeting said, hey, you're making more of an investment than you are losing. This stuff has more than a fifty-year lifespan, so getting two percent a year actually means we're winning, right? Does that mean you care for this?
Yeah. These, these assets, you know, there is, there's a little bit of a difference from the, the original stuff that was put in. You have stronger, better materials that were put into the ground a hundred years ago. The stuff that's put into the, your current day ductile iron pipe is made of a lot of recycled materials, and it does not, it's not going to have the quite as long as expected life. So whereas the really old, more pure ductile or cast iron pipe that went into the ground is going to get you, you know, a hundred to a hundred twenty years of life, you still are going to get, even with newer materials, you're going to get, you know, forty to sixty to seventy in that range. A lot of the things we've learned, I say we, I mean the whole industry, is that really a huge impact that we have is the type of soils that we have and whether those are corroding those assets. And then you've also got, when you're talking about not having a strong pipe in the ground as maybe the original stuff, each year, all the, all these water mains, water mains throughout the city get a stress test where that frost level, that's where we unfortunately get, get some breaks. But over time, that stress makes those assets, I mean, more brittle. So, so in terms of getting in rehabilitating those, we look at our open cut investment. The projects noted here this year, we did chair to place pipe, which is a newer type of water main rehabilitation, where we're able to still maintain that host pipe, but, but to give it that strength that it needs and rehabilitate it for the long term. Those liners are rated to be standalone, so meaning that the host pipe completely disintegrated, that, that liner is, is rated for standalone. And then when you look in terms of our operating pressure we have in the system, so that's where we're talking about operational issues and that pipe breaking. We operate on the system not to exceed eighty PSI in the system. The liners themselves are rated at an operational pressure of four hundred PSI. So that, that gives you a little bit of context to what we're doing and what we're putting into the ground.
So that's almost like the liner might last longer than the actual
Correct.
pipe that's surrounding it?
Correct. And we also do put corrosion control in each one of our access, at least construction sites to, to further give us longevity on the existing host pipe.
That's great. Can you go, oh, finish this?
Yep. Then I'm going to get into some of the, some of the, some of the goals that were signed to Public Works or also the managers' departments. I'm kind of working through a couple of different hats here. So the, the first item I wanted to talk about here would be the mobility bike action plan study. So we did develop an RFP. We worked with the infrastructure committee and got that out. We did receive two proposals, and we will be working with the infrastructure committee to ask questions of those who've submitted those proposals and make a recommendation to the full city commission for consideration. I anticipate that will be either probably in January, so we can get that process online started. So we've, the goal was to start that process, which we certainly have done this year, so we're well underway there. The next item would be the wave finding signage. So we have had that completed this year. I believe I updated that last time, and as well as the zoning ordinance for our C1 scheduled uses. That was another outcome from the master plan, which we worked through planning commission and city commission, as well as our Gaslight Village Business Association for recommendations, which were all approved. And the last item I had was just that we, that we had out there too is working with M E D C at our redevelopment certification. And a few times I've sent you guys some communications to my updates, and it's still at M E D C right now. I'm told that they're actually working on our review currently. So we expect to have something soon.
Do you want to do a favor and go all the way back to the chief's slide? I know. Just rework. Okay. I just wanted to talk about that, a little bit more about that crosswalk education enforcement zone and the enhanced school security program. So there are two officers here tonight, and I hope you will take this back to the rest of the crew and chief, if you would as well. I know that when we start new things, and so going out with community and doing things that we didn't do before, I know that it can be uncomfortable. And all I have heard is positive, positive, positive about this. And so I want to, I want to thank you all for taking this leap of faith of doing things that are uncomfortable. I don't know about you, but for me, things are uncomfortable until I do them three or four or five times, and it's like, okay, now I get it. And so I want to thank you all for taking that leap of saying, okay, we'll try this. This feels uncomfortable. But I know that they really appreciate it, and I know that this is going to get the whole community to know you better and to appreciate the great work that you do. So thank you for taking that leap.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Over to Sergeant Rick Ricker.
Final update on the community park, recreation, open space, and greenway plan. So following our last city commission meeting, I should go back to chapter twenty-one, all the final documents have been sent over to M C S A to pull that whole plan together and put it in an electronic form. So we included the approval minutes, the public review period comments that were sent in by our community members, signed resolutions in our M I B affidavit. So these are all the required documents to show that we followed the appropriate process on that checklist. So we will be submitting that electronically through the D N R online portal the first week of January, once again, to achieve our full five-year status. So we want to be after January one. That, again, make that plan available to us from twenty to the end of twenty twenty-four. The plan will be reviewed by the D N R staff. We'll typically receive approval notice in thirty to sixty days. So probably late January, early February, we'll know that everything is in and that it is on file and has been accepted. Any final comments on the plan? So I think from the city's perspective, we have hit all of our targets. We're actually about four or five weeks ahead of plan to make sure a document is fully in place and ready to be implemented.
That's great. That's nice.
Second goal, that we'll work out and develop our departmental social media plans. What we're trying to do is have more coordinated effort and starting to work with Kiara with our supervisory staff. So we've created a subcommittee working together to map out a monthly calendar with all of our events, so all of our supervisory staff can be on the same page. A lot of times, they are all working on their individual programs in their department and doing their own marketing and pushing information out to the community. We want to have a more of a strategic front. So this calendar will be helpful. And then Astrida, who is our administrative clerk, will help pull that down to a daily calendar. So we're going to be putting in, we're going to be putting in our Facebook posts and pushing information out to email newsletters and other communication sources that we have. So Kiara's going to continue to work with us on that front. We did put five hundred dollars in our budget this year to assist with boosting and creating ads on Facebook. So Kiara's helping us on that front too, to understand how posting can benefit us in regards to boosting and creating ads. They're a little bit different, but you can use criteria, you can use certain target markets, barriers programming based on age, gender, and other things. So we're going to learn more as we go, and we continue to push that out. The other thing we are doing is putting together, that's impossible to. Putting together a yearly calendar, because one thing that's come up in our discussions is the fact that parents busy. So we want to make sure we can at least provide them the key deadlines for a lot of our youth sports oriented programs. So in essence, this will be a program period that will go in the program guide, and it will just give you an X in all those locations that during this program guide, we prepare this sport or activity will be up and coming because a lot of people want to set it by the deadline, save the twenty dollars and guarantee they're going to get on a team or in the program. So believe it or not, no matter how much communication we put out, people still tell us they don't see it. So we want to continue to find ways to make sure they have that information in front of them. With that being said, I'd like to comment briefly on our civic rec, rec one software program. You may recall, two years ago in October, we decided to take a leap of faith and move to a software program that would be more user friendly for our community. And lo and behold, more user friendly internal for our staff, and has done exactly that. So we started from scratch. We cleared out that database and started new. We are now up to about ten thousand members two years into that switch, which gets us back on power where we were prior to making that change. So what that means is our community is now heavily invested in that new software. With that, there is also a very nice training coaches portal. So if you coach A T, you actually get a team box on your home account that allows you to communicate. When your team directs with your email, you can sign your jersey numbers in there, assign treats and so forth. That's a little bit of a training campaign we're working on right now, because too many of the coaches aren't jumping in there wanting to use it, understand and be able to log in. Quite often, it might be their spouse, like, or husband creates the house account. Mom and dad may never actually go into it if they're not using it, but they're coaching. So we're working on that educational piece. With that also being said, the household accounts provides you your statements, your receipts for anything you sign up for readily available to you, a calendar for all of your activities, so where you're supposed to be and what time. And I believe it can be actually downloaded on your phone if you want. And you can put in your own contact preferences, meaning if you have a man or your grandparent that's involved, you can have their email or cell phone numbers in every preferences as well. So you have multiple ways to contact those that are involved with your family. Also, pool memberships has been a big one for us. We now have a laptop that holds wealthy and the community pool. So now your membership card can be swiped in with a barcode scanner when you arrive. It also means you can renew your membership card and or punch card without coming into our office, because we've now captured your picture. We simply renew that online. Your card is still defective. We just either change your expiration date or the number of punches on your card. So again, much more convenient for you, and your card is automatically updated. And you can do that yourself online by simply paying for a new year or buying more punches. So that's been real convenient as well. And we are moving towards automating our facility rentals. So we start out with a pavilion. You can actually do that online yourself. We will review, send you that has been approved, click this box to pay, and you're done. So you can actually do it without actually speaking to anybody, where in the past you couldn't do that. So we're working through and enhancing all these automated processes. That's why I'm here.
Thanks. Any other questions?
And I love the fact that you are partnering with Sable even more, getting more of that information out there and using more updated methods for pushing that stuff out. So well done, and look forward to seeing even more.
Yeah, I would say personally for our department, Kevin, Save, and Gear, and Brian in the past, have been very helpful. Again, that has never been our forte as far as marketing and communications. They have enhanced our abilities to do our job better.
They've been a really good addition.
Thank you.
City Clerk Karen Brower is going to give an update from the city manager's office on the city code.
So we asked for a little bit more detail, so I'll try and talk a little bit more than I was originally going to. As you know, the code book project has been a very long and involved process. We're going on almost two years now. We awarded the contract to American Legal Publishing last May or June of twenty eighteen. And just as we were beginning to pull everything together, all the departments went, oh wait, I have a couple more ordinances to amend. So if you remember, there was a flurry last fall of about another ten or twelve ordinance amendments that, that we went ahead and did before we gathered everything together. So in January, we packaged up over a hundred ordinance amendments that had been done since the last time the book was fully reviewed and codified, sent those all off to a publisher. They took about four months to get us a draft of the new book to look at. And then in August, we got a, what's called a legal review, that gave us in-depth, how many items were on here, John? Sixty-seven items that they needed answers for. So John and I spent several weeks meeting at the end of the day, going through all of these items. Everything from state law sites, you know, what section to refer to, state law for more information, to this seems to be a typo, this doesn't make sense, these seem a little outdated, things like the two ordinance amendments that you looked at tonight were both suggestions. So we looked through everything, took a couple of months to get all of those answers. We worked with each department to figure out some of these things. We even went back to the city of Grand Rapids attorney on some sewer stuff, because we had questions and things that didn't make sense. So we packaged all that up and again, sent it back to American Legal Publishing at the end of October. And from here, they're saying about three months before our code will be online. We will get three hard copies, just because you can't trust technology with everything these days. So we will get three hard copies, probably one for my office, one for the city manager, and one for the attorney. Everybody else will be online. So you'll be able to look up any code section. There'll be a search feature if you want to know about dogs, if you want to know about grass, if you wanted to know different things. You'll be able to look things up. You'll be able to print them. You'll be able to email it to a friend. You know, if you have a constituent that's asking you for these regulations, you can look it up and then press email, type in this constituent's address, and be able to send them the relevant portion of the city code. So we're really looking forward to that. I'm hoping sometime in January, that will be out. From there, we do also have a to-do list. John and I aren't, aren't done yet. There were several items that it didn't make any sense to hold this project up any longer, but there's some things that they suggested that we look at. Things like insurance minimums that are written into the code that may be pretty outdated. Insurance coverage is obviously going to be a lot higher now. Some of the fees and fines that are in our ordinances probably should be reviewed because they haven't been changed in a long time. Filing fees, the parks rules was one of the things that we needed to look at. And then our water termination language agreement. We don't shut the water off, but we probably should have language in our code book that allows us to if the situation warrants. So we do have a list of things that we still need to work on. Probably be working on those bit by bit over the winter and possibly bringing more changes. That's that goes on. Any questions?
Just briefly, I, I know a lot of times our old system wasn't responsive to changes. So when we did make those changes, it was even difficult to get into that electronic system, or it was difficult to find, okay, it references that we removed section whatever, but where's the new content? Does the new system handle that kind of stuff better? Or is that always a challenge?
We hope. We, that was one of our, that was our, our priority when we interviewed these firms, was how easy it is to update. Two of the three firms just wanted us to do it every six months. Just send, you know, June and December, send us what you got, and then we'll change the book, or we'll change the online. We really didn't want to do it that way anymore, because it leads to getting far behind. The company that we chose, we chose specifically because every time you adopt an ordinance, we will email it to them, and within ten to fourteen days, it will be up on the website. So by the time it's effective, it should be available. So as long as-
What happens with the hard copies? Do we get new one, new hard copies ever, or?
He said we could choose how often we wanted the hard copies. So I can ask for them every time, or I can just say, you know what, every six months, send me the new pages for my book. But since John and I are the only ones that will be using the books, you know, that shouldn't be an issue. But the, the online code, so it is mobile friendly. The officers and zoning administrators should be able to look things up. The officers and zoning administrators should be able to look things up quickly, even when they're in the field, residents. Obviously, people are using more tablets and phones to do their research all the time, so hopefully that will be a lot easier for people to do.
Awesome. Thanks for all your hard work.
And if that concludes, unless there's anything else to discuss now?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, my goodness, under an hour, can't stand that. All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks for your...